That we had hoped that might come to our salvation in the following months, which haven't materialised and some additional pressures which the members of the committee have highlighted this morning and have been fully aware of over the last few months. We had hoped the Remus Foreground traditional scheme to be extended, unfortunately that wasn't forthcoming. We did submit a pilot bid for localisation of business rates along with a combined authority, but that approach was not successful. And we also at the same time saw if we weren't successful in that, that the existing business rate retention pilot scheme that began two years ago will be extended again, that was before coming. Members will be aware that the public sector pay cap was lifted, not moved, but increased slightly, so that's put additional pressure of just under a million pounds on the public sector pay there and no additional funds were forthcoming to support that, so that falls all locally on the union councils. And the pressures which obviously from demand-led services have been well articulated, both in the integrated short form support that members have considered and also in the illustrations that members highlighted this morning. So this all comes as chairman with an overall position of shortfall in eighteen nineteen of four point three million pounds, and I know that there are three amendments that have been on the second table this morning for bridge and that. And happy to answer any questions in relation to business plan or content of the only option for change.
Before we go on to any amendments, have you got any questions though, Chris?
Maybe I should know this one, I don't right now. The unhappy news that we weren't successful in being one of the ten pilots of this business rate retention when you combine it with people. Was there any reason given by central government as why we weren't successful?
No, no, so they said that it was well, you know, it was oversubscribed, there was a lot of people in it. I think it's very disappointing because all London boroughs receive no hundred per cent business rate retention scheme. I think just by it, we were first, you know, we did get one and we did get some money out. That's a slightly different to what now, and that one's been coming to an end. I think perhaps they might have thought that you've had one, but I don't know. But it would have been nice if we could have continued on the same terms as the other ones today, and it would certainly, the one we're proposing, would have made a significant difference.
If I could just add to that, I mean, the chair is absolutely right, the thing that we have had is that all the applications were appropriate and within the guidelines, therefore they were oversubscribed, they had to allocate resources which were to a certain extent limited, and therefore had to rationalise the number of applications they received. We weren't successful. What they have said is that they are afraid to open up again the process for nineteen twenty, and therefore we are able to finish that process for when that scheme comes into effect.
Yeah, just adding to that, so work stands on the way between the combined authorities who led on the bid because it's now approved, and it's to look at if a scheme might be possible in the future. But I think that, as we know, as we stand at this point in time, our budgets obviously have keys set on what we're thinking, how long and how long something will take. Any more questions for Chris before amendments? In which case I'd like to propose an amendment on the Conservative group. So today, we in the Conservatives are going to propose a two point nine nine per cent council tax increase, different to the business plan, above the business plan, to protect vital services and put our finances on a firm footing. Before I go any further, I want to thank all members of the GPC committee, the hard work they've done throughout the year to try and get to this specific position. I want to thank the members of my group that helped me with this, they worked tirelessly to help me on this amendment, and least but, sorry, last, but certainly not least, I really want a strong message to go out on behalf of all of GPC committee members, and the thanks you give to officers, not just in dealing with the gators to this stage, but the tireless pain that they worked through the year to actually deliver the efficiency transformation and day-to-day business of the running of this council. In terms of why we're proposing a council tax increase, I want to be very clear on one subject. At present, we receive seventy five million less in government funding than an average London borough. We receive thirteen point seven million less than an average county council. We are the third lowest funded county council in the country. If the outdated and broken funding formula had been rectified by now, or if transitional funding was appropriately maintained, we would not need to consider whether to increase council tax entitlements, and we would not be considering it today. The budget gap from twenty eighteen nineteen of four point three million remains. This is despite having already included the two per cent health social care preset for next year and year after. And as there are further substantial gaps forecast for the next four years, we reluctantly therefore must recommend an additional two point nine nine per cent council tax increase in the twenty eighteen nineteen budget. Future years are indicative only, and as we get more information on government announcements and we see how our transformation plans work out throughout the end of year turns, throughout next year, they may be subject to change, but the total is two to add up social care as two point nine nine per cent council tax increase for twenty eighteen nineteen budget. As a county council, we are concentrating on delivering for the long term by being financially stable, not by keeping service. We've not revisited items such as winter quitting, which the public may have cleared to us, they did not notice this. We've increased spending by two million pounds on repairing potholes. We currently have plans to increase library provision. We're a council that has already delivered many efficiencies and will continue to strive for more, but this must be driven from a stable financial position. We've maintained our general reserves at three per cent per year budget, which is around sixteen million pounds. This is extremely low, and as we heard earlier on today in our integrated revenue and resources report, it is very difficult to predict demand-led services. Just a five per cent increase in demand would increase an unexpected pressure of ten million pounds. We are a proven very low cost council, so further efficiencies will be harder to find, and this cannot match the speed of prediction of future funding requirements. In order to demonstrate that we are a low cost council, we commissioned Grant Thornton, a well-respected independent agency, to do benchmarking to examine our finances. There's a link provided for everybody to read the full in-depth report, but as a summary, our costs are very low, and that is their definition. Our plans for commercialisation and investment will return three hundred and one million pounds excess over the medium to long term, so we're moving forward with our new commercialisation investment committee to ever-increasing alternative methods to taxation for funding. We're a council that has and will continue to invest in imaginative and innovative schemes by retaining the transformation fund to support long-term and sustainable transformation. That transformation fund which we set up has already invested eight million pounds, which will return forty million pounds to help deliver services. We've created a one million pound fund accessible to parishes, which is administrated by the new communities and partnerships committees, as a clear demonstration of our increasing work with our communities and our partnerships. Our investment transformation fund will invest three hundred and nineteen million pounds in transformation and investments to return six hundred and twenty million over medium to long term. And this is on the top of the fact that that Grant Thornton report that I've already referred to has evaluated our income generation ahead as high, which we are proud of. This council is nationally at the point of public sector reform and intends to maintain that drive. If you look back, we are a full runner, that has come across right, but let's try it. If you look back, we have been a full runner of shared back office services, if you take LGSS. Great tribute to Gillian Measly, our shared chief executive with Peterborough. And because of those measures, there have been increased number of shared positions and structure posts with Peterborough. We're continuing to look for further shared services working opportunities, whether to drive down costs, increase capacity and resilience, and improve importantly our outcomes for our residents. We're a council that works with our communities and assists our partners, such as the NHS, acting together to address our challenges and priorities. We have seen a sharp rise in delayed transfer of care cases from one hundred per week in January to one hundred and fifty a week in December. We've also seen reductions in the length of stay in hospital for older people from eight point one days in April to five point six days in October. This means older people leaving hospital in higher numbers, more quickly, and in a more fragile state. This does assist our partners and create capacity in our hospitals, but it also creates significant pressures on our social care budget. But we are proud that we are able to use our resources to absolute maximum to support the NHS in this way. We are a council that will continue to fight for a funding system that is fair to the residents of Cambridgeshire, and doesn't penalise them for being at the forefront of delivering economic growth on behalf of this nation. Cambridgeshire is a great place to call home, which is why so many people want to live here. However, those people wanting to live here and desire to be part of a successful economy is also placing unprecedented demands on our services. We look at next year's budget as changes to democracy, pressures and inflation to account for an additional thirty one million pound burden on our already stretched budgets. We have many radical and ambitious plans drawn up by our committees, which has formed part of the business plans that are in front of you today, and I'm sure that many of you, that all of you that sit on committees will be able to elaborate and lead on those. In fact, one that I introduced myself as a business case to relocate from Shire Hall, and that is moving forwards and looks as if it could deliver significant savings to the authority. So to sum up, while this council awaits final plans from other presetting authorities, P G, the district and city councils, the police and fire, the proposed add of social care preset increase of two per cent and the council tax increase of two point nine nine per cent from the next year's budget will add twenty three pounds seventy six annually, forty six p a week, and thirty five per cent, thirty five pounds sixty four annually, sixty eight pence a week respectively, to ban the property. So, thank you. Okay, open for debate.
There are two alternative amendments, and I have to put those forward at this point.
We can only take one proposal at a time, so can we debate this proposal, then we'll take it. I do understand that we'll have to do a bit of mental agility to recognise exactly what we amend compared to the amended proposal, but it will be to, if it is amended. Does that make sense? Do you want to take one proposal at a time? Is it possible that they can read their names, but not that it's all entirely in session? I think what we can do then, councillor Metzinger, is I think you could discuss what you would speak to them, what you would do, and if this amendment fails, then you will have a chance to revise it. Before you start, councillor James.
It's another procedural point. Having seen the three amendments, there are, there could be two halves, how much money should we raise and how should we spend it? And there are an agreement on how much should be raised, and there are disagreements about the latter. And I wonder if procedurally we could split the vote, as it were, so we could express unanimity about the right, how we raise the money, but then we would remain disagreed about how we spend it.
We've had a proposal and a second, I see no problem in splitting that to add a proposal and seconding on the amount, and then we can vote on that, and then we can stick with our proposal secondary on the way of spending it, and then discuss about that later. Yeah, I see no problem with that. Is there, do you wish to, us to take a vote on the, I think we'll hear all three, and then I'll take that, I'll just check mentally that we're happy with the way we're moving forward, and then we'll go there. So, councillor Metzinger, I think you wish to speak to your proposals.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to say how very relieved I am and delighted that the Conservatives group have listened to the arguments that I've been making in this council for what seems like forever, that actually we cannot continue to have an ever-increasing need in the council and ever-increasing demand for services and not increase council tax when our budget coming from central government is decreasing and decreasing. So I am very, very pleased that the Conservatives have changed their position and are now proposing raising council tax in the way that they are. That is extremely good news. Having said that, it then seems, while that is very good news because it means that the council will be able to meet its statutory obligations to meet demand for children's, children coming into care, as we have been discussing, and the increasing demand for older people, I am also disappointed that having decided to raise this money, they're then deciding that they're not using that money to increase the level and quality of public services available to people here in Cambridgeshire. The level of public services which are, which Cambridgeshire residents are in receipt of at present has been decreasing year on year on year. We have had this year, the most obvious example of that is the closure of the children centres. We have had really significant reductions in the level of service they've offered to families and parents of young children. We've got, we've had significant reductions in bus services, such that many people in villages around the county who are not able to drive are effectively cut off for much of the time now because there is simply no public transport available in their villages. We've had huge pressures being put on the families of sixteen to eighteen year olds, who are now obliged to stay in education until the age of eighteen, but there is no subsidy whatsoever for sixteen to eighteen transport, which means that many families of children of that age are faced with hundreds of pounds worth of costs simply to get to a sixth form college or a sixth form post sixteen educational centre that they are obliged to go to, they have no choice. Those sorts of demands being constantly put on Cambridgeshire residents means that the level of service and the costs are just piling up on particular individuals, and I think it's important that we should be doing all we can to try and support those vulnerable individuals and make sure that the level of our public services is not constantly decreasing. In addition to that, we've seen this year a significant cut to the amount of money that's available for local highways improvements and additional burdens being placed on parish councils, who are asking very recently for sensible road maintenance, road improvement schemes. If that money is available, we should be making it available for spending, not just sitting in a reserve. So, and the money is available, and we should be using it for supporting our public services. Our roads are in a worse condition than they have ever been, there's the number of potholes, the rate of deterioration in the quality of roads is increasing every year. If there is money available for better road maintenance, we should be using it for better road maintenance. So that is what the Liberal Democrats will be arguing now and in council in a couple of weeks' time. We are very, very pleased that you will be raising the money, we are very disappointed that you are not choosing to spend it on the things that this council and this part of the world desperately needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Metzinger. Would you like to speak to more?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair, I would. The bottom line for all of us, and we all know that there is a bottom line, and you have referred to it, Chair, is there simply isn't enough money coming into public services, whether it's the NHS or whether it's the county council. And we as an opposition party could simply take the line, there's not enough money, and it's the government's fault, and, you know, that's where we're going to lay the blame. But we don't feel that that is a suitable approach for any opposition party to take because after all, we are elected to do our best for the children and the people of Cambridgeshire. So the Labour Group, small as it is, metaphorically rolled up its sleeves and looked at areas of the budget, we looked at whether our pressures internally on our services, we looked at what residents have been telling us about the services and where they want to see more services. And therefore we have come up with some ideas about how we might spend money, and we do support the increase in council tax because unfortunately it does seem to be the only way forward. We could draw on reserves, but that's a short-term fix for what are longer-term problems. And the Labour Group certainly have proposed an increase in council tax in every alternative budget since two thousand and thirteen, so us proposing the two point nine nine per cent increase now is certainly in line with our policy in the past. So what kinds of things would we like to see money spent on? And we've listed them in our alternative budget here, and I'll just go through them briefly. First of all, libraries. We're glad to see the book fund has been restored to its three two five K, but that has been at the expense of some reduction of funding elsewhere in the library budget. And we do feel that over the time of austerity, libraries have taken rather a big hit. There have been, there's been a lowering of investment in there, and therefore we would like to see further money in the investment of our libraries. They are a vital part of the community, and they are, they don't just lend books anymore. I mean, libraries are far more than that, and therefore we are proposing an increase in the funding, investment in libraries for three hundred and twenty five. Again, looking at highways, we have got government funding for a pothole fund, but the thing that about highways that I think is most valued by people are the local highway initiatives, the opportunity for local people to draw attention to the things in their area that they believe if we do something about will greatly enhance the environment. We get applications every year, there isn't always enough money to cover the applicants, and so we'd like to propose further investment in that area so that local people have a bigger pot in which to make applications for things that will enhance their environment. The other issue which comes up for many people is street lighting, and particularly residential streets, which do seem in some areas to be remarkably dark in places. I did some work with finance people, particularly Roger Emery, and I'm very grateful for his help, to discover that the kinds of lamps that were put in residential areas are at the moment at their maximum illumination, and they cannot be any brighter. Unless I was exceedingly surprised about this, because they're considerably less bright than those on the main traffic streets. And it does seem rather a short-sighted policy to spend all that money on putting in lamps that can't actually be particularly bright. But what we could do, we could replace some of the ten per cent of lamps that were taken out when the new lighting system was put in, and we have proposed an amount to go into a fund there, which would allow individuals to apply, much as they do for a local highways initiative, to have lamps replaced on their streets where lamps have been taken away. And so it would be up to residents to make a case to do that. The other scheme that we are very keen to continue is the bikeability programme. This is a programme that educates young people in safe cycling, and I think we'd all agree that safe cycling is crucial, and it's good to get to educate children in that so they might turn into safe cycling adults, of which regrettably there seems to be something of a dearth in areas of Cambridgeshire. It is funded by grant, but we understand there may be a shortfall in grant this year, and so we are proposing a modest investment to make sure that there is no shortfall in that and that the programme continues. But then we come finally to some of the really big issues in our budget, and the first and foremost of those, of course, is of tacted children, as we've heard this morning. There is a grant from the Transformation Fund for in-depth research into some of the key issues in that, but in the meantime, it is clear, I think, to everybody that those pressures will continue. And therefore we have proposed an additional one point five million to go into the budget for looked after children for next year. And that at the moment is a total investment of two point five three five million, when there will be in the fund once we've covered our shortfall, somewhat over three million pounds. So we did also consider other areas, and one area, of course, that has raised a great deal of concern is children's centres and the new programme there. The Labour Group have debated this long and hard, and we have at the moment suggested that the one point one one seven million that we haven't allocated should go into a strategic reserve fund, the main focus, there would be two main focuses, one of which would be looking at children's centres. I think from further consideration, we feel that staffing is vital in children's centres, and that staffing needs to be protected. We are unconvinced by the argument that savings will be backroom staff rather than frontline staff because in many cases they are indistinguishable. So we would like to make a slight alteration to what we've got here, and we would like to actually put seven point seven fifty K of our one point one seven million into children's centres specifically, so that there needs to be no redundancies and that the level of staffing is maintained in children's centres and in, particularly in rural areas, the alternative scheme that has been put in place there. And that would then leave a small amount of money for respite care beds. We did give great consideration to the huge issue of people leaving hospital and the problems of people being ready to leave hospital, but there is nowhere for them to go. So I did speak to the director for adult services about putting or suggesting additional money into purchasing respite beds. Apparently, there are no more respite beds to be purchased, so there is a huge problem here. And one of the things we would really like to stress is that it has been muted a number of times, Chair, that we should build our own care homes specifically for respite care, and I really feel that we should look at that seriously. The problem of getting people out of hospitals is not going to go away, and we do need to do something much more dramatic about that, I think, and that would be building our own social care centres. We also looked at, and therefore we would believe that all of the money that we would put aside, which would now be two fifty K, would be overly here if it does become possible to invest in respite care beds, that is what we do. The other area we considered was health visiting, and we are glad to see that the Cup in health visiting to newborn children and primary mothers will continue, that was a proposed cup, but it will continue, but we would like to ensure that it does continue in the future because those visits are absolutely vital for newborn children and children going in the first two years of life, and so we can put something in the baseline for the following year. The final thing we can, we considered investing in was bus subsidies, and we're very pleased to see that there are no further cuts in bus subsidies. But when we looked at that, we found the problem in rural areas isn't about bus subsidies, it's about buses that you're stuck, that there aren't any buses for you to subsidise in many rural areas, and therefore, again, we feel that in looking at the transport review which is going on in the combined authority, it is absolutely vital that transport in rural areas is considered, and that the work of the total transport group, which has started to look at this area, is continued with a view to finding perhaps smarter ways of providing public transport in rural areas. But you can't subsidise buses that aren't there, and what we need in rural areas is buses. So those in relatively brief, Chair, are some of the issues that the Conservatives perhaps have addressed with the money that has been raised by this very, very welcome increase in council tax. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very, very much. But before I move on to speakers then, before I move on to... Before I move on to speakers, then, before I move on to speakers, just a point of order.
I was just thinking, would now be the right time for me to raise my proposals, but we collectively agreed to 4.99.
It might be, if you let me as the Chair get word in. You might not have to happen. So we have a proposal from myself, seconded by Roger. And we've agreed to split it into two elements. The one thing that this internal general purposes committee agrees on already is the solid proposal of 2... 2.99. So, you may not have heard, sorry, Derek, you may not have heard this. So three amendments came forward, all of them were indicative, sorry, were proposing 2.99% council tax for 2018-19 and 2% adult social care for 2018-19. Subsequent years are indicative. We have a conservative proposal on the table at the moment. There's a difference in opinion on the expenditure of the amounts, but we all agree in the heading of that. So it's suggested we'll agree that, I've proposed, Roger's seconded, that we will move to a vote on just that element. And then we'll separate the spending plans after the second amendment. So could I ask, are we all agreed on the actual proposals as indicated in the conservative amendment?
For the spending, sorry.
Just a conservative amendment. The council tax for adult social care, the others are called the conservative amendment.
Chair, just in terms of Michelle's... Can I suggest?
Just follow that.
From, on the recommendation of 3A, all the recommendations in recommendation 3 will remain with respect to the decision made about allocation of the spending. So can I say for 3A, the last sentence which starts allocate to additional funds. So you can take, then you can extract that from...
1.123. Okay, so at the moment, we've extracted just that.
Sorry, General, sorry, I've forgotten my self here. So you can, that last sentence, you can extract from the whole of recommendation 3, i.e., and I'll just read this out. Allocate additional funds for a significant council tax beyond those used to balance 2018-19 budgets of screening reserve. You can take that to a second recommendation. All the other elements of 3A, B, C, et cetera, et cetera, stand with respect to the sixty-six.
So I think we're all understood.
Yep.
As we are taking it.
Recommendation 3, we are taking the whole of recommendation 3, apart from, which will make a new recommendation, allocate additional funds, which is on 3A.
So taking out A.
Just taking the last sentence. So we've extracted from recommendation, allocate additional funds.
It effectively does, we bring to an hour and a minute to separate out...
Just to see it easier for the...
To separate our revenue rates from international. Okay. Got that. So, conservative amendment, with that part removed, are all those in favour? I'm going to take that as unanimous. Thank you very much. In which case, we're going to move on to the second part of the debate. There is a conservative proposal in front of you as to what to do with that extra amount of money. I've made a clear in the integrated reserve, the integrated resource performance report earlier, that we believe there are significant risks in medium-term concern. There are significant risks in announcements from government, in demand, there are pressures, and actually, some of the transformations and efficiencies actually coming out of the numbers that will eventually work out through the long term. And I don't think it's unreasonable at this point in time. In fact, I think it's extremely prudent at this point in time that we allocate that excess of revenue, which is about £3.6 million, to smoothing reserve, which we anticipate revisiting regularly, certainly yearly, because for a full decision, we'll prove the impact as well, to see whether that can be used or reallocated depending on need at that point in time. We in the Conservatives did consider whether to spend more, whether to take more. We have the use of the MRP fund for transformation. So we believe that if there are any ways to significantly improve our services, the outcomes, all the savings generated by three efficiency measures, whatever, that is available there for that. So we didn't wish to touch the that part, nor did we wish to draw on it, because that would be a one-way revenue dip to natural-based funding and whatnot. So we decided that despite it being more than we know we need for next year or more than we anticipate we need for next year, it would be good financial stable management to put that into smoothing reserve because of the serious concerns we have, particularly centre around the years 3, 4 and 5 of the plan. We welcome the other group's support of our proposal to move council tax to 2.99% and also reduce it and also cap. And it's good to see the unanimity in that. We feel that now is the time to alter the plans. And we feel that it is prudent of us to alter those plans and to see that we will take the original proposal to full council. However, it is difficult to accept expenditure that will add on to the revenue baseline at this point in time, when we have significant concerns about the medium term. And therefore, I cannot really see us, I cannot see myself accepting the proposal that we put in front of us. I think if we saw dissatisfaction in service levels coming towards from our plans, which have not been evident, then we would have to reconsider it. And they are my issue of detail or acceptable to the MRP fund that could be tackled during the year. It would be better than any of our spending plans if it not come to fruition. So therefore, I'm sticking with our original amendment. I believe that we should pursue that. It's now open to debate, Lorna Dupre and I'm for it.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm very pleased that the Conservative group has agreed our proposal for a 2.99% general council tax.
Certainly, I think that's wrong.
How important, Chair? It's just fundamentally incorrect.
Yes, and this is for the public.
Having had a long track record of arguing for this increased focus on time, and I share Councilor Nessing's relief at that change of mind of the part of the Conservative group. I would like to ask two questions about firstly, the conservative amendment, and secondly, through you, Chair, about the Labour amendment. The first question is on the paragraph on the third page of the Business Plan Amendment from the Conservative group, which says that the proposed increase is 1% lower in total taxation on flexibility afforded by government. I would just like to ask whether you confirm that that's a reference to the potential allowed by the government to increase the level of adult social care preset to 3%? Because if it is, then obviously, that would have a knock-on effect on the subsequent year, because we would only be able to increase adult social care preset by 1% in the following year. Just wanted that clarification, thank you. The other question is through the Chair about the Labour amendment, which referred to respite care, but not respite care as I understood it, because it seemed to be talking about making beds available for people who think...
Point of order, thanks, Dupre. There is a conservative amendment on the table, which we are discussing. Should the conservative amendment fail, we can then move on to other amendments. They were allowed introduction, but I can't see them ever being discussed. We have a amendment on the table.
I understand that, Chair. However, if this amendment is passed, the other amendments will not be able to be put. And I think that it would be actually quite a good idea to clarify that, because it will know that crop up again with the effective council.
If the amendment was passed, you could still put the amendment forward. We need a bit of mental agility.
Until the end of the round. Okay, thank you.
Can we be clear about, we are talking about the Conservative for them as proposed and the papers that we've got.
Actually, I'm going to ask for some advice on this point. There are numerous ways that they're open to solving this, because if we pass the amendment, it becomes a substantive motion. And then you can pose changes to substantive motion. But the article that we've just passed, your amendments would be substantial differences to that. Therefore, they could be allowed as amendments. So I have two ways of handling this. The first is just to move and pass our amendment, should we get enough votes, and then suspend standing orders to allow yours to be put. Alternatively, just to allow the conversation on the various points to be handled as part of the overall debate, and we move to a vote on the conservative amendment at that. As Chairman, it's a difficult decision. I've decided that what we should do is allow all comments and discussions to move ahead on all three subjects all at once, and then we will move to a vote on the conservative amendment at the end of that. Okay. So, Lorna, you had a second point you wished to raise, which was about the Labour proposal.
Yes, and thank you for the clarification of this issue, Chair. In fact, that was all I was seeking, was to have a chance to clarify what was proposed as well. So that was the question I was asking, was about what respite meant in that context, in that amendment. And I assume that you will allow Councilor Weyant to clarify that when she speaks. The debate now, having had the vote on spending, on raising 2.99%, is on what we do with it. And I think that the smoothing reserve, the idea that we should now be holding this back for a rainy day, is actually several years past its own by date, because it has been reigning for years in this authority. And we're seeing the results of that in terms of the decision on the children's centres, in terms of our deteriorating roads, or the lack of adequate street lighting in many places, the pressures on public transport, and the costs for many families, including in particular the costs of young adults 16 plus who are now required to be in college if they're not in work or training, are immensely expensive for those young people to get around the county, particularly in our rural areas, if they get to college and lose their life chances. And we're also seeing a consultation that is ongoing at the moment about hugely inclusion, doing the costs to people who are in need of care for several elements of their care costs as well. And all of that is, as my colleague said, putting huge pressure on residents as they try to live their lives. The time to raise council tax, to spend on the services that we need to spend on, was several years ago. That was the best time to do that. The next best time is now. And I therefore stand entirely by our proposal to do that, to address some of the very many issues that our residents are facing. And one final point I would wish to make is that I believe it is imperative that we send a signal in sending our budget this year about putting the residents first, and that we therefore seek to reverse the unpardonable decision to increase councillors' allowances and the establishment of several new committees at administrative cost as well as allowances, special allowances to their chairs and vice-chairs, at the very time as we are punching holes in the safety net that our services represent.
As you can, Councilor Dupre, you had a question from the Conservative amendment, and it was about the 1% flexibility afforded by government. So for those of you that are not aware, the adult social care could have gone up to 3% for 2018-19, but that would have had to reduce then to 1% for 19-20. There is a knock-on effect, in fact, that it goes into the base earlier. So there's a straight marginal difference in the quantum of the amounts. But yes, that is what it refers to.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before I move on to the next speaker, Councilor Weyant, there was a direct question on the Labour amendment.
If I'm using the wrong phrase, Chair, I do apologise. What I am referring to, which I think is clear from the text, is that we have an issue with mainly elderly people who are ready to be in hospital but are not ready yet to return to their homes for independent living. And they need to go somewhere in between to help with re-ablement or to continuous assessment or get them back into the home. They would have been in the past, I think, poor convalescent homes. I thought the phrase was now respite care, but maybe Anna can tell me what the correct phrase is. But that is what I'm talking about, is that layer, if you like, of provision that has disappeared. And I'm suggesting that there is a need for that, so that individuals don't remain in hospital unnecessarily, but they can go there safely, while there is work with them to get them back to live independently in their own homes. And it has been discussed that we should seek to provide the buildings for that ourselves. And that's what we're suggesting, that that should move forward. So I'm sorry if I'm using the wrong phrase. I did discuss it with Charlotte, and she didn't tell me it was the wrong phrase, but maybe it is. And I will do my best to find out what the correct phrase is for what I'm proposing. Thank you, Chair. And I'd also like to speak on your amendment. I don't know if it's my turn, I'm happy to weigh my turn to do that.
Thank you for clarifying. Move on then to Peter.
Thank you, Chair. It's just a bit of clarification, really short to Joan. In your amendment, Joan, all about health visiting for newborns. Yeah, in fact, the advocate of the service for the 0-19-year-old, which has been, savings have been deferred, as you quite rightly say, and if £238,000 shortfall would be through the public health reserves. That is done so we can put together a more transformative approach and integrate the service together with Peter to cover that. Saying that, that new service, I'm sure, will have newborn health visiting, because it is support, as a grandfather, how important it is. And it will be done on a basis of need. And once they attain one, two and a half years, then that will transfer to a clinic as opposed to home-based, again, on need. So if they need home visits, they will get home visits. But for one to two and a half years, it will be clinic-based.
Right, I'd just like to say something on the PPD housing project that we've got that would address possibly some of your concerns. I mean, so the 10-year plan for that is to create over 2,000 residential units, which will be a mix of market, sale and rent and shared ownership. But as well as that, the programme can develop extra care facilities on surplus sites that would help support older people. And those are all the things that we can look at within the housing thing. It can address the issues of specialist housing that we need, more affordable homes and homes for key workers. So there is the ability within the commercial investment housing arm to look at a lot of the things that have been brought up here today. Yeah, obviously, it's going to take time to feed through. And it will also give positive revenue and capital receipts to this council to support services going forward. I would also say I'm totally against using the surplus because if we have a look at future years, particularly 2021, there's great pressures in that year and if we don't keep some money back, we could find ourselves in even worse trouble in future years.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Chair, I think we should take all the positives from this morning, that we should. Because now we've got 7.5 million extra for this county next year and the years after that, and that's really, really positive. There's a bit of a disagreement about spending and what to do with less than half of that. But let's take the positives out of it and congratulate ourselves and put the right message out there that we are supportive of this thing. In trying to come up with something which would represent what we've achieved this morning, I just did a quick Google on quotes about sinners returning to God. Unfortunately, it is 89 and I couldn't work out which was the best one. So maybe by the time we get to the council meeting, I'll have the right one. But maybe the right quote to use is the one about, that refers to people not learning the lessons of history and therefore being bound to repeat them. And we have gone through four dark years during which there has been an unholy alliance, which is resulting us not being able to help ourselves. Because that's what raising council tax is about. It's about helping yourself and not bleating all the time about the reduction in the RSG. That gave us a tremendous challenge, by the way, the reduction in the RSG, and all credit for all the work that has been done for transformation to be able to address that. Because compared to that 75 million odd reduction, 7.5 million a year doesn't sound very much. But over four years, we did not help ourselves. And I think it's really good that we've now realised that there's something we can do in addition to just complaining about not having enough money. So there will be the continuing debate about what to do with the remaining 3 million. But now it is a debate at the fringes. So it's been a positive meeting, morning. And let's no longer have people keep referring back to our medium-term financial strategy, which has 0% council tax and it increases forevermore. Your financial strategy supports the way you want to do business. It doesn't drive it. So all good morning, Chief. Well done.
And councillor, just to remind that everybody, including everybody in the public here, what we're debating this morning is actually a recommendation to council. It's not a final decision-making body. It's a recommendation. And I'm sure some of these, some of the plays that don't look good for us, as well as some of the other points, will be rehearsed and rehashed then, so we'll...
Well, I support the Conservative recommendations. You'll be surprised to hear. But my real reasoning behind that is because I think we've all, officers, members, everybody over the last four years have worked incredibly hard to try and drive the maximum efficiencies and maximum savings we possibly can out of this council. We commissioned a report which proves that we are a very efficient and very lean council. However, there comes a point, and we have reached that point, where you just can't, you can continue to get efficiencies, but they're not of sufficient size or ease, or not necessarily ease, but ability to do it and certainty where you have to take these sort of decisions. So we have reluctantly made this recommendation. Just like to deal with the spending proposals or the broad spending proposals that fall within my areas from the two other groups. I see that there's a recommendation that more money should be spent on street lighting, particularly from the Labour group. They're suggesting that we should replace a lot of streetlights and they're putting 450,000 proposed into that. We have just gone through a huge replacement programme under a £55 million contract to replace streetlights across the whole of Cambridge City. It's not all about its challenges. I'm sure all of us know in our own personal areas, it's been a very difficult programme, but it has now been basically completed. Now the important thing is to manage those streetlights properly and efficiently and to make sure we continually drive savings in those lights. Just popping a few more lights into areas where it's perceived that there is, is not actually going to be a very useful thing to do. It's also going to be very expensive because in the programme that we did, the streetlights were actually repositioned as well to provide the maximum amount of coverage.
No, they weren't.
They were. Yes, that was the whole basis of the programme.
Absolutely categorically not. The instructions were simply lights out. If the councillor wishes to come to his, then I'll show them where they were taken out.
The programme was to reposition many of those lights. And as a result, there are, you can't just pop extra lights back in because the other ones have been moved. And I'm sure that you will know that they weren't just put into the same holes as the one previous.
Absolutely.
There were additional holes made. There may be some instances where they were put in the same holes, but there was still a survey done across the whole area where the positioning of those lights was. So it's not as easy as just popping lights into, and that's the fact.
I think we can get our members briefing to clarify that.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to request because clearly there's a difference of opinion here and I strongly defend that my opinion is correct.
I say we'll get a members briefing now on that just to clarify that.
With regard to potholes, as I'm sure you all have noticed, those very large number of potholes are appearing, have appeared over the winter period. Has been a more severe winter than previously, which has put huge pressure on the highways. But we have repaired an enormous number of potholes. We are continually driving savings through the new contract with Scanska. And indeed, we have now pioneered a new method of repairing those potholes collectively called the Dragon Patcher. We've had one on loan. We have now acquired one. This will greatly improve and speed up the efficiency of replacing those potholes. So it is within the contract just to spend more money on the thing. We are always applying for grants from government. We are applying for grants to improve road safety and within that contract, a lot of efficiencies are being driven. Finally, the libraries. Huge amount of work has been done on the libraries. We are very determined to drive many innovations through our library service, which is happening within the current budget. We are able to replace the book fund and we are looking to increase people's abilities to commercialise our libraries and make them more efficient. So we really are looking to invest in our libraries and I absolutely commend the work that the committee has done. It's coming for my committee in February. And I think you will find that we have really been able to transform and give our libraries some certainty for the future. And that has been done within the current budgets and therefore it is not necessarily necessary to put a lot more money into those budgets. Let's see how the reforms go. Let's see the efficiencies that we can drive. Let's see how the commercialisation goes. But we are absolutely determined that our libraries will be fit for the 21st century and we can drive these forward.
Thank you, Matty.
Thank you. Chair, apologies for my late reception. I just attended a funeral this morning. Thank you for letting me join the meeting. Today is a difficult day for me because I fundamentally believe in not increasing council tax unless and until there is a case and you absolutely have to. And, you know, with careful planning at East Cans District Council, we've managed a 0% rise for four years and we're freezing council tax for the next two years. So we have gone six years, we will have gone six years with no rise. Things are very different for upper-tier authorities. The challenges are much greater. We have an absolute duty of care to support the most vulnerable in our society. So it's a very different picture. We know the unfair funding situation that we are in. We are not bleating about, to use another councillor's words, asking for more money. We are asking for a fair funding situation and a fair playing field. And we all know the reality that if we had a fair funding situation, we wouldn't need to be sitting here discussing the policies of the council. That's the reality. I'd like to remind the public and members of this committee that opposition members in the past refused to support a significant transformation programme that was put forward by, worked up between our party and officers. And the opposition blocked that last time round, blocked it as it went through the committee structure, blocked it at full council, refused to support it. And I want to say today, a huge thank you to all the staff at this authority who have driven those transformation proposals through. They are making significant differences to our ability to continue and to sustain services at what we know now at average levels. We know that we have a very low cost to serve in adult social care and we are maintaining really good responses back from our public and people who use our services. And we know that benchmarking, we are retaining the services and good outcomes for people. And that is thanks to the hard work of officers who have driven that through. And in people and communities alone, in that directorate, we have driven our £20 million of savings probably by year-end, it's something like that figure, about 18.5 million at the moment. If we hadn't done that, we would be facing a very serious situation indeed here today. We've got 6.5 million pound pressure. That figure would be 26.5 million pounds if we hadn't taken the decisions that we took a year ago that were not supported by the opposition. That's thanks to this administration that those things have happened. The money and the proposal that is on the table by the Conservatives is not for rainy day money. It is absolutely not that. I agree with councillor Jenkins. We're not in a rainy day situation. It's about carefully planning for the medium term to make sure that we have get over this situation that we are in. And yes, we can all put forward proposals to blow that additional money on day one and that is not what we're going to do. It's not a responsible attitude whatsoever. We have to very carefully prioritise what we're doing with the funding and the money. And we know that we are capped in how much money can be raised in the future and that's why we need to carefully plan this year and for the future. And we have a £22 million inherent risk in our transformation programme that we have to have a reserve to call upon and that is the responsible thing to do, to make sure that, you know, we can continue to deliver and to continue to transform. So I said, Joan's difficulty with wording, Joan, there are many, many different ways that we support to try and get people out of hospital. We are putting in huge effort into dealing with delayed transfers of care. I know some have come down. We all know the pressures we're facing at the moment. We've seen over the winter, last few winter weeks, we've seen on average 100 referrals from Adambrokes is the normal average, coming out of Adambrokes, coming in to need adult social care services. That's gone up by 50% to 150 now, whilst 50 people may not sound like massive amounts in terms of 650,000 population. A system that is already under strain, that is an enormous, enormous increase. But we are putting huge measures in. There's many ways to deal with that situation and residential places, whatever you want to call them, not the only answer. We have, we've planned to put in 100 extra re-abatement staff. Our workforce at the moment is around 250. So you can see that's a sizable increase. Now recruiting those staff in a Cambridge city that has very low levels of unemployment and high wages relatively speaking is a challenge in itself and we have to make the recruitment offer more attractive. We're having 23 roving home care cars that can go around the county in a sort of not emergency fashion, but quickly and discharge people from hospital, get them out, provide support. We're having, we are having an expansion of interim beds and better use of the accommodation that we have available. We're setting up 14 care flats, exactly really, I think what you were trying to suggest. That is already happening and going in. Our new home care contract is resulting in more providers. We've got much more flexibility in the home care market. We've still got gaps, particularly geographical gaps in that provision. We've doubled the number of care home places in our block contracts recently. We have seven-day working for the discharge planning teams in our hospitals. If the rest of the system would only catch up with that, and it's something I have lobbied Jeremy Hunt about, we would be in a much better place. Because our guys are working on a Sunday and the rest of the system isn't there to catch up with and support that. We've got dedicated worker for self-funders to help those people as well, to get them out quickly. And we've improved the discharge to assess system across the system. And of course importantly, we're also trying to prevent people going in in the first place and we're doing an expansion of our adult, very successful adult early health services and a lot of work around falls prevention, which is one of the really big reasons people go in in the first place. So I cannot tell you, there is an enormous amount of effort going in across the system and every single day there is work going on to deal with delayed transfers of care. I think that what we have set out is to show that we are absolutely working over the medium term to make sure that we can continue to support the most vulnerable people in our communities. That's adult social care and its children's services. We have large challenges and that's what this budget is about. To address some of the issues, you know, the age-old discussion about children's centres. The children's centre proposals were absolutely to get support more flexibly into more locations for more families across the geography, not just about Cambridge city centre. This is about the rural areas. And that is what our proposals were resolving and workers going in and absolutely deliver that money. Give you biggest examples in Sutton, in Ede, where that is actively being planned and happening. And it's to make it available for more, more people, more families. I would remind the opposition who are bleeding about potholes, yes, we all know we've got a lot of potholes. Our administration put £2 million extra funding into dealing with potholes, which the opposition voted down, tried to vote down, voted against. So that's where we are on potholes around transport. I recognise the points that are being made about rural transport and bus subsidies. However, I would like to remind everybody that that is no longer the remit of this authority. It is the remit absolutely of the combined authority. And if more money needs to go into bus services and they are doing a county-wide review across Peterborough and Hampshire review, then that is the way that that needs to happen. We are not in the business of funding services that belong to other authorities. We are not in that place because we've got to protect our own services and our own services' work. So that's what we need to do with that and we need to go and make that happen through the combined authority. I, two years ago, I would have sat here as somebody very heavily involved in adult social care committee and I would not have had confidence to say, to look my electorate in the mirror and say, "I'm going to put up council tax because I believe we're running the leanest, most efficient authority that we could possibly run." In adult social care, I can hand on heart now say that we have been through absolutely everything with a fine-tooth comb and everything that is available to us in a short time for the next natural year has been done and is being done and will continue to be done. We have a medium-term plan. We have a long-term plan. We have made bold and vicious decisions around some of that. So I am comfortable that I am now in a position in adult social care where I can say that our offices have worked so hard to turn things around and they've kicked absolutely everything, every line of every budget that we can and we're still supporting people, everyone who needs it, everyone who comes to our front door. And I will never have anybody saying that we are cutting front-line services in adult social care because we are absolutely not. And we need to be clear and we need to give our public confidence around that, that we are here for them and to support them and that will continue. And what I think we're clearly facing is a structural deficit in our funding situation. You know, we have, we have an issue. We have more demography, more complexity of need coming at us than we can frankly cater for with the current funding situation that we're in. Now, that might mean two things. You can put up council tax. That will not deal with the structural deficit that we have in our funding. We can put it up the maximum for the next five, six, seven years. That is not going to deal with the issue. Therefore, we're faced with two things. We either, we have to go and make the play for a fairer funding situation. But what we also have to do is we have to look at much, much more radical transformation of what can be done. And in adult social care, we're working hard with external consultants on a 10-year vision to put adult social care into a sustainable position for the future. And we're coming up with some really good ideas around that. And we are also working on my pet project, which is vital importance to this authority and our residents, which is the neighbourhood care pilots, where we are looking to radically transform the way that we deal with the most massive bill in this authority, which is adult social care and supporting people with social care needs. And I fully ask you to engage with that process and get on board with it because we have to make it work together if we're going to sort out funding issues in this authority. So we are taking drastic things. That is coming from this administration. I know in children's services, I let Simon speak for the committee, that there is huge work going in around children's services. work going in around around children's services. We have to be banging the fairer funding drum, and I want to say to my residents today that I recognise that this decision, if it goes forward at full council, is really, really a good message, and it will be hard for many people out there, and I do not make light of cups of coffee per week and pretending that this isn't going to hurt a lot of people. This is a painful decision for many people out there, many of my residents who are on agricultural, rural level of wages are struggling to run a car, get around a ground place, this is not an easy decision. And I want them to know that we don't take this decision lightly, that this council, the district council, citizens' advice bureau are there to absolutely help people, make sure that they are getting any funding help that they can, and that they're entitled to it to help them with that. And I think, my final message, I know I've had the floor in time, Steve, sorry, but I think it would be absolutely irresponsible to spend the additional money that we are raising, if this goes through in the next financial year, on on all of those other things. We absolutely have to prioritise that money, and we are planning carefully to do that, and that's what must happen.
Thank you very much, Chair. Ian?
Wait till I start, I think. The first thing actually, I think we need to actually recognise actually that we have voted on an increase on the council tax, and that was unanimous, okay? I think that's actually the first and most important message. It will be difficult, it's not easy, it's not easy for people who are on low incomes, it is not easy for people in the land of assessment who perhaps on agricultural wages. So we need to recognise that we all ought to recognise the pressure, and I think that's actually very, very important to state that upfront. I would go to actually make a couple of other points. The first actually is about this report by Graham Thornton, that one of my questions, I think, actually, is that we need to make sure that this is circulated widely to all of our members, all of the, we are the general purpose, you see, we are not, this needs to go to all members and also, I think, be documented for the residents, so they can see where we sit, what our income is, where we sit in various parts of this organisation. So that's an important document, I think, to go forward, okay, for when we get to full council. A lot of the debate that we might have here will be done in a few weeks' time in full council, so I'm not going to talk about community transport, I'm not going to talk about public transport, which by and large we don't subsidise much at all, it is actually a commercial operation, that's for another day. I do want to talk a little bit, make sure that, for instance, in the pact that we've got today, we don't have the community impact assessments. I know there are nine, but I actually think, for instance, when we come to full council, that there is some recognition, and I would actually ask, should the community impact assessments be made available in paper or what, I'm happy for that to be taken away. But it is important actually that all of us, all members of all parties recognise the community impact assessments that we have got. One particular point I want to pick up on, and slightly follows from what Anna, which is the piece about the number of the elderly people and the reduced eight point one days in April to five point seven days in October, that's the reduced number. In answer to your question also, I think the answer is, sorry, is extra care facilities is a word that I've used in the past, okay, where people who are discharged from hospital then can go into extra care, have maybe some physio, have some information about diet, et cetera, et cetera, so that they can then go home again, often provided by registered social landlords, but extra care facilities are the words, that's what I use, I think we use other words, I don't think there's a right word for it by the way, because different people use it, but I do actually feel that the pressure that we are under, the NHS is under in respect of waiting lists, reduced bed occupancy, in respect of length of stay, has to be one of our priorities to fully understand it. The word delayed discharge has been discussed for twenty years or longer, and I think it's perhaps time that we perhaps try to resolve what actually we can actually do with other people like the NHS, like registered social landlords, to actually assist this. So if I look forward about where I'd like to spend some money, in the future and not today, it may be in fully understanding what we can do in that particular area, but that is where we are, the pressure is coming, children's services and the adult services are crucial, that this authority actually spends vast majority of its money on, that's the area that we have to concentrate on. I'd also like to thank the members of my committee, who actually voted unanimously when we discussed the budget to go forward, with unanimous vote in favour of what my committee was proposing.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just seeing if anyone else wants to speak.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to go back now and reassure Joan that there's money already there for the health for newborns, and I want to talk about the Health Directorate that we have here, and I think the Public Health Directorate has been radically altered since last year, and I think it's made radically altered directly within whole council. Commissioning functions have been restructured, brought together into the joint Public Health Commission unit across Cambridge and Peterborough, the whole Directorate is now working jointly across the two authorities, and all the savings that has occurred, and the savings have occurred without affecting outcomes. For example, we used to directly provide some resuscitation services to come quick, and that's now been outsourced and integrated to the lifestyle provider, everyone health, and that is making huge savings without affecting any outcomes of the services. If you go around the Public Health Directorate chair, if you attend their management meetings held Peterborough and then the Chyberd dinner, or their away days, we have one next week, there's three words that they live by, and those words are innovation, transformation, and value for money. And we have innovated, we have, and yeah, we have done all this, as has been spoken, but we haven't stopped doing it, and we will continue to do it. I mean, value for money, for example, to get them in Hertfordshire with the lowest level of public health grant funding per head in the whole of East of England, forty-one pounds. Inflationary pressures, demand, demographic pressures on services, but all this has been contained within the existing financial envelope, and with their seven hundred thousand pounds cash saving made to beat the national public health grant reduction, and in addition, the service will contribute to supporting the corporate end of the opposition. Innovation, starting this month, we will be the first local authority, the very first local authority nationally, to involve elected members, because the Public Health Directorate is a member led directorate, and it's the first local authority nationally to involve our elected members in part in our priorisation framework for public health spending. This has been developed by Public Health England, they're economists, and they have come in here for workshops and development sessions with our health committee to help us and them in future public health business planning. Now, Public Health England also are going to ask us to take part in a new sexual health commissioning efforts to increase the services we give, but better value for money. And they don't do that to any local authority, as they said to me, their very words was, we look at well-run, efficient, forward-thinking councils that we think we can work with and move forward together. So those words together is exactly what we are, so we can and we will and we have done.
Thank you very much, Chris. Joan?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of, a couple of things, I am very pleased actually to hear that the, you know, the Conservative group have recognised that we do not get sufficient funding from central government, from government, and I'm very proud that they have finally accepted that that is the case. I know, I'm well aware that there is a lot going on with adult social services, and many of it is highly commendable, and I hope in the long run it will make things better, but nonetheless, there is still a problem of delayed discharges. Any, the BBC are currently running programmes about the NHS, it's got news thing, and it comes up all the time, that there is a problem of getting people out of bed. So I do applaud what we're doing, I think you're doing a great job, but nevertheless, there is still a problem, and I think we do have to recognise in longer term that we do need either, I'm told two phrases here, interim beds or extra care is needed, so, and I still think, and I'm glad to hear, that your committee is doing something about making provision for that, because I think it's absolutely vital. The reason I don't agree with putting this money into a smoothing fund is because, and you've, you've mentioned that we will, that there are priorities, I mean, what worries me is if it goes into a fund, be used when there are pressures or whatever, that all of it could quite happily be swallowed up by children's services and adult social care, and therefore other areas that are a great concern to our residents and concern to members as well, will be overlooked. And that's why I think we do need some priorities for what we might spend that money on, because otherwise relatively small amounts, and they are small amounts, you know, more investment in libraries, a small amount in local highways initiative, which is not about potholes, by the way, it's absolutely not about potholes, it is about other initiatives that local people bring for improvement in their environment in that area. And the issue about street lighting, we can probably have a big argument about that, but if they were repositioning them, and I have to say, there's a wonderful reposition on one street in my ward, where they planted it right next to a huge tree, so the inhabitants of the tree have got fantastic lighting. Unfortunately, the inhabitants of the street are in a rather more difficult position. And it isn't putting back all of the lights, I just think that there are, and I'm sure it must happen in all areas, you're walking along the street and suddenly you hit a pool of real significant darkness, which a lot of people find intimidating and threatening, and so it's trying to look at where we might put back, I mean, I gather it's about a thousand pounds to put a lamp back, so obviously, I'm not suggesting all that sort of place, but I do think there is real issue. And it is these issues that are, in terms of our overall budget, it resides in small areas, and these are the things that worry me, that will get lost if we don't have some kind of prioritisation about what we're going to spend our additional revenue on. And that additional revenue, according to all the tables, is going to be a continued additional revenue beyond eighteen, nineteen. So we are going to have opportunities in future to actually prepare a budget. So that is what worries me, Chair, about just saying, okay, we'll put it into a smoothing fund, but relatively small demands, but very important demands from our residents, will be overlooked in the, when there are real pressures and demands from what we know are our two biggest demand-led problematic budget, which is children, a particular children's social care and adult social services. So I am unhappy about the fact there is no prioritisation of how we think that money should be spent, and that's why I wouldn't support it just going into a smoothing fund. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think that Roger nearly answered.
I just wanted to come back on, because I'm with the smoothing reserve, there's a clear message from government that local services need to be delivered locally, that the message we have not is what we can or cannot do in the future. So as much as you look ahead at what we might or might not be able to do, we don't know whether adult social care precept of two per cent will be there the year after next. So that is the message from government, that we need to step up and deliver local services from a local level, they're not yet telling us what we can or cannot do going forward, and so therefore smoothing reserve is just pure crude and financial planning as far as I'm concerned.
Simon, and does anyone else want to speak? Derek?
Thank you, Chair. First, I just wanted to echo what David said in relation to us all coming together on the tax issue, but, and it's a couple of dots, but I was going to speak to you very much.
I've lost my mind.
I just want to make a quote out of this strategic framework, it says here, our aspiration is for every child and young person in Cambridgeshire to achieve the best they can, where all the places that work with children and elderly people will be good and outstanding. And I don't doubt that everybody in this room wants that for everybody in this county. For me, it's a very difficult decision, like Hannah, to increase council tax, it's something that I fought hard and hard, and we've obviously had to reach that decision today. Look after children, and Joan has obviously talked on this issue quite a lot in the CYP committee, I share her frustrations, and I do, I like three times as much money as you'd be proposing in your budget, but you know, we are in the reality, and we do need to look at the way we do things, I think it's really important. And yes, it won't take, it will take time to do this, but if you look at Hertfordshire, for example, I mean, Hertfordshire, a couple of years ago, had a higher rate of looked after children than we did, but actually now, there are ninety children below us in current standing, so they're obviously doing something right, which is obviously why we need to look at how we're doing things as opposed to just chucking money in, and it's the old analogy I've used as many times, is trying to fill the bath up whilst you've got the plug out, you know, because it just doesn't work, so it's important that we try and stop the water leaving the bath while, before we start throwing more and more money at them, so that's important. You know, we are doing things, we're corporate parents for our children in Cambridgeshire, we've got responsibility for that, which is why we push to get the corporate parenting board set up, I think it's crucial. I'm really pleased to say that we've now got young people attending the corporate parenting board, which is, which is fantastic, because it gives them a voice to members, so we can listen to some of their concerns. Some of you will probably not even be aware of the STEP programme that's taking place, which is basically to help SEND children with challenging and difficult behaviour within our schools, it's a fantastic programme, enabling schools to learn how to do with these children, and maximise their potential whilst in a school setting. Whilst the media are saying, I've never seen so many people with cameras in the GPC, I want to use this opportunity to reach out, because we need more foster carers in Cambridgeshire, that's quite clear, because we have a lot of our children who are placed out of county for numerous reasons, that also takes a lot of time for our officers to go out and visit these people, whether that be in Manchester, Newcastle, or Cornwall, that in itself, our social workers spend a huge amount of time travelling, going to see these children, and then coming back, so it's crucial that we engage our community to get foster carers to look after our children as close and locally to their families as possible, and that also brings through the supportive lodgings. You know, not everybody within Cambridgeshire is geared up to be a foster carer for whatever reason, but it might be that they want to give that opportunity to a young person, and the commitment for supportive lodgings is not quite as much as a foster carer, so I've reached out to the media here to try and push that agenda for all of us, whatever part of Cambridgeshire we live in. And then finally, not, not all of you have had an upbringing like me, I left school at sixteen, I didn't want to education, I had a complete difference to a lot of you, and for that reason, I've been heavily involved in the outdoor education programme, because I firmly believe that it's not all about being in a classroom to help our young people in Cambridgeshire, and I'm hopeful that we bring on the programme through the outdoor education programmes to see an I committee on Friday, that we'll look at ways that we can engage our young people from an outdoor perspective. I think there's massive opportunity within our outdoor education programme in Cambridgeshire, and I think we can set the benchmark nationally by just thinking about how we do things, and having a positive steer in how we drive that agenda forward. I don't want to go on too much, Steve, because most of the thoughts are in common, so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you very much. Derek?
Thank you, Chair, I apologise for being late, and anything this project can do to be learnt to speed traffic, I think you know, to cut it from an hour, two minutes, I will welcome.
I think you'll find my passes, I'm going to leave the combined one.
But anyway, yeah, just several points I'd like to make, one is that I don't feel that I am in the opposition, I like to work with everybody, and I know what your colleagues do as well, so please, you know, when you're talking about opposition, don't be further from me. I just want to pick up on the most frequent point that's just been made about supportive lodgings. My wife herself did support lodgings, I think eight years, I must say, it's a very challenging occupation, but very, very, very rewarding, so go for supportive lodgings if you can hear it. Bus services and combined authorities, yeah, we in a very large town in Cambridgeshire, we're working towards that. working towards that this year, and hopefully something will happen. But, you know, I don't despair and recognise the problems that we, the council, got with this £75 million less than the average London borough, to do possibly more work with that money. And, you know, I'm in a fortunate position that yes, I can criticise our government for not giving us the correct, the proper funding, and also by and of itself, not so much guidelines. But I don't, again, support the policy of funding for local people. And again, we try and do that again in some years. And to be honest, when we've put our precept up there and we've told people why we're doing it, there is a ton of opposition. So I think that needs to be told, people need to be told what we're spending it on. Okay, people are going to say, well, it doesn't affect me, I don't go to the line, I don't have sexual care. But one of my biggest concerns is, you call it convalescent homes or lack of them, delayed transfers and extra care facilities. And that really worries me, and I'd like to get a little bit more to grips with that, and the cost of it per bed. And I do not know how much it costs to keep somebody in hospital, in a hospital bed, for a day a week. And I welcome that input, because I think that there are ways that we can be very much reduce that cost, by just thinking a little bit outside the boxes. But that's really one way to say at the moment, but as I say, I do appreciate it. We are between somewhat of a rough place with this lack of funding. So let's go forward on it.
Thank you, thank you very much Derek. Lucy?
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the things that Anna said. And one of them was that while I am deeply relieved that the Conservatives have changed their, had a change of heart and decided to raise council tax, I don't think that there is anybody in this room who is really thrilled to be increasing the burden on families in Cambridge, who we all know are really struggling with increased inflation and not increasing levels of pay. So we do all recognise that raising tax is a last resort, and it is absolutely a last resort, but it is one that's very, very necessary at this time. One of the things that I wanted to say was that in the past years, as we've had year after year of cuts, it has been the most vulnerable who have paid the costs of those cuts. And they have been quite considerable costs. So when we've had reduced bus subsidies, the people who have had to pay for that are people who are having to pay taxi fares, or in the case of some areas of East Cam, having to pay for the new minibus services, when they used to previously have a free bus pass. Now that is some of the most vulnerable people who are having to pay some of the heaviest costs. That's also true for the reductions in children's centres. It's the vulnerable parents, parents who are having to take children across town or across to a different village to try and access their children's centre, because it's further for them to go. It's also true with the reductions in post-16 transport, that the burdens are falling particularly heavily because of the cuts on some of the most vulnerable in society. And the most terrible example of that in these papers are the proposals that are currently before the Adult Social Care Committee to increase charges for carers and people with disabilities. We have to recognise that although council tax is a last resort, it is at least relatively fair in comparison with constantly asking the most vulnerable to pay more. And that is why I think it is important that when we do increase the council tax, we provide, we put back some of those services that support some of the most vulnerable, some of the people who are struggling the most in our society. And I hope that, the Conservatives seem to be about three years behind the Liberal Democrats. I hope that at some point they will have a look at these proposals and maybe in three years' time, will be looking at reintroducing post-16 transport subsidies and helping some of our most vulnerable people more. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, very quick to Chair, and almost light relief after what's been going on before. Someone has pointed out to me that in the business case papers, and I'm sure none of us have read them in any grade ten, in one of them there is a particular reference to a political party and a link to some election material, which is inappropriate. I understand that Ian Ecom has already apologised for that. That reference should be taken out of the papers, because they are public documents. I'll take that with office as afterwards.
Yeah, I'm not very quite sure.
Few people go that deeply into the papers. Thank you.
Yes, thank you Chair. I was obviously resourcing our amendment and just wanted to pick up on the point about the smoothing reserve. I mean, I was going to say, it was probably about an hour ago now, when we made the integrated resource performance report, we were talking about the pressures and the unpredictability of needs led services. And that's exactly what this can respond to. So to say that we increased the council tax and then spent it, seems ludicrous, because you're predating your budget on an overspend next year in that case. So that's exactly what this smoothing reserve is for, which is why I support it. Also Chair, I just wanted to pick up on the new Communities and Partnerships Committee, and I apologize for its introduction. In fact Chair, I'd like to draw attention to the diagram on page 56. And of course, it's repeated in the strategic framework on 79. And would suggest that perhaps in the segment that says communities, it should say Communities and Partnerships. It's very much part of the Transformation Programme. If you look in 2.4 underneath, working in the system in partnerships, intervening earlier preemptively, and focusing on communities and places, that new committee is paying to and will have a huge impact, I hope, and I should give you a turn to make sure it does, in those areas. I'm meeting with the chairs and senior officers from health, children's and adults this afternoon to see how we can work across council on helping to relieve some of their pressures with the work our committee does. Looking at the community impact assessments, there are none specifically for the Communities and Partnerships Committee, but the solutions and mitigation to some of those measures are to be found within communities and within partnerships. So really, as part of our Transformation Programme, our work with partnerships and communities is integral to that work and the outcomes we derive from it. So that's my suggestion Chair, and we add partnerships into that community section. And perhaps refer to the new committee within the text, that legitimises the work we're doing and emphasises our commitment to working with communities and partnerships as part of the solution Chair. If we carry on doing what we've always done, we're not going to save results. And obviously we need to change things we're doing, which is where the Transformation Programme is aimed at, Chair.
Thanks. In which case I'll try and cover a few points myself. One of the items that's referred to is the grant form to the report, and whether it be available. So we embedded on the links on the website, et cetera, so everyone can get hold of it. Because I think it's absolutely vital that people understand that the efficiencies in transformation we've got today have got us to a very low cost council. None of us wanted to put up council tax until we got to a position where we could look our council tax barrier in the eye, look in the mirror and face ourselves and say, yes, we need more council tax, because we know that we've done everything we can. That's not to say that there won't be other opportunities in the future, that's not to say that further efficiencies, further transformation will come ahead. But we know that there is not enough meat on the bone left, shall we say, to drive out the further efficiencies and savings that we need, which we've got to. So raising council tax, you do not do until you have to. If you look at the outcomes over the last few years, they've been fairly steady and a lot of areas have actually improved. I did not recognise, the world often describes us by the opposition members. I think what we've done is become more efficient, transform the way that we operate and have a good set of services out there. When I look at the community impact assessments for the works going ahead, there is nothing raising heads on the back of my head as to the impact. And we find things that are coming out as they develop, that is useful, particularly with Communities and Partnerships Committee and individual committees, that we will address them should they come about. I think that to describe that we are three years behind the Liberal Democrats, I directly reference to that taxation issue, because the last three years we have not gone ahead in raising council tax. We have not needed to deliver the services that we've needed, that we've delivered. If we would have done that, we would have had three extra years of spending, a more bloatedness in the organisation, that we'd be tackling today on top of it, whilst our hard pressed residents had to cough up even more. In fact, even this year, we've got to the end of this year, we're balancing our budget for this, for next year by approving a council tax now, not the council tax tomorrow's year. And that brings me on to the purpose of the smoothing reserve. I have heard nothing today from the opposition parties to discuss about what's going to happen in the medium term. Nothing at all. Increased spending, I've not been wrong with increased spending for good ideas, but you seem to fail to recognise the significant challenges that are in the medium term, should financial packages not come forward. If I look at next year, we've got to save £42 million of savings, which we're managing to balance today. Many of the proposals that have brought forward as transformational efficiencies are often brought by the opposition, described with cuts, even though they're clearly not. But the year after, we have to find another £26.5 million, the year after that, another £21.8 million. And I worry, and we all worry, that considering we've done so much in the past, so much efficiency, so much transformation, so much rest on our income generation, so much rest on our commercialisation, and we are unsure about the demand management of the future, I have serious concerns, and so do we, about what's going to happen in the years to come. So to raise the tax today, to simply spend it, to put in nice pretty things to go in election leaflets, without both addressing what's going to happen there, is simply financially illiterate, as far as I'm concerned. Sorry, I blow up the tone somewhat from what was a very collegiate meeting, but I feel so passionate on this subject, my apologies for that. So the reason, the backbuck for why we have proposed a smoothing reserve, is we've always said it's about a five year plan. You can make your council tax, have a social care provision for next year and next year only, but you do have to have a credible plan for the five years. And there's only one of those in front of us today that is credible in the medium to the longer term, which is why I'll be supporting that. There was a discussion about swallowing up that money if it doesn't get allocated in selecting a smoothing reserve. Let me be absolutely clear, this reserve is under the control of the General Purposes Committee. It will not be released, to be swallowed up by a minor shy of dinner, until we have a credible plan to deal with years three, four and five. At this present point in time, we do not have those credible plans, but I can go to the government and I say, we know where we're going to be then. We have some plans in action, but we're not going to get there yet. So it will not be there to be swallowed up, and it will not be attacked unless General Purposes Committee in its entirety, you know, really knows a good idea for what to do there. The community impact assessments, they are important, they're in section four, please do have a good look at them before we get to board council. We've got, we've been talking today about the council tax re-raise, and we've been talking about what we're about to do with the money. But it's vitally important that everybody understands, I know they've been through the committees, but everybody understands the plans that we've dropped for the £40 plus million of savings that are coming next year, and they're happy with the community impact assessments. I've had a look through, nothing to raise the handles on the back of my neck, but I do ask that everybody else does that themselves. So to sum it all up, today is a plan that is a combination of two things. So it's the Conservative Amendment, I'll be moving to the vote on the moment. It's about two things. The one thing we've already passed is how to deal with the short term, which is the immediate budget deficit for next year, there is some extra funding for that. The second part about the Conservative Amendment today is how to deal with the medium term risks that are facing council, as we know them at the back of the day. We will revisit all of those issues regularly, once a year, but it is very much about that. And on that basis, I think we should move to the vote. So, all those in favour of the Conservative amendments? Thank you. All those against? In which case, the amendment is carried and that will be the substantial motion proposed to board council. Do I need to take a, are we only voting on three? Or do we...